I was thinking it's funny scanning through the budget. I'm like, you're looking at like the library services. Like vanished for a million. There wasn't a lead. What?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Those are books.
I think we're ready, Julie.
All right.
Start recording.
We'll call meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, our nation, our God, in whose health, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We will start with the public forum. Does anybody here who would like to speak at the open forum?
No.
Okay.
No presentations tonight, no?
Okay.
So we are just here kind of follow up. I know we had discussed talking at the parks committee meeting, but we weren't invited, so I'm assuming there weren't any concerns. And I know it's discussed either talk at a special council meeting or at the next actual regular meeting. So to kind of follow up and see where we're at, if we want to go forward with ISG or talk to them or get their feedback.
We had a parks meeting and I thought those individuals were invited to that. And it was just Rob and I who showed up. But it was kind of a combined parks meeting for the pavilion and the splash pad. And Rob and I were the only one in attendance. So I don't know if you didn't get the email or who got the emails of that combined meeting.
It was posted. The meeting was posted.
I guess we called the day of the meeting and we didn't know when it was, I guess.
Right. I wasn't aware of that. You weren't informed. I guess we're waiting to see if there's some talks in the budget about how we're going to handle park improvements. So until we kind of figure out where we're going to go with that direction, it's hard to say exactly, give a definite answer.
We have a, we have a good. Ask for an update on the next council agenda. If we, if there's interest in finding out how it's going. If anybody's interested.
Sir?
Should I put that in the agenda? For next time?
Actually, I'm going to put it on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
Keep coming back, sir. Keep coming back.
Can we add stuff to the agenda that I have?
They can, you can add agenda items to the agenda, but you wouldn't be able to take action, official action on them until the next council meeting.
But we can, yeah.
If you want to talk about them, you can certainly add them.
Okay.
But you can't act on them.
Okay. All right. So we've got the splash pad. Good. Next. Brett Roger. Yep.
Hi, Loretta.
Hi.
As you all know, I am a Loretta, I am Loretta Stutzman. I'm a senior citizen in Winthrop. And I live on a fixed income. I just paid my taxes, which included my property taxes for the city of Winthrop, my county taxes and my school board taxes. And they went up quite a bit this year. And I guess I'm concerned what they're going to do in the future. I've been coming to these meetings the last few months. And it seems the one thing I seem to hear is spend, spend, spend. I don't know if we always do this or it's just because I'm coming that I am aware of it. Or it's people that want, want, want. I want this. I want that. I want that. But you know what? Sometimes we have to start saying no. Because can we really afford raising taxes on all of the citizens in this town? I cannot, like I said, I'm on a fixed income. I cannot afford more and more taxes. So we talk about a fancy new second street. And there are reasons for it. But are all the reasons for parts of it necessary? We're talking about, or we've done part of the police station, which is great, but we still need a new part. We need a new ambulance barn. We need a new fire barn. And now they're talking about a couple of new projects in the park. I'm saying let's do just one or two projects at a time. So we as senior citizens can see how our taxes are going to increase from year to year. You know, don't keep doing project, 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 project. And all of a sudden, our taxes are up here and I can't afford them. I just can't afford them. So I want you to really think about how you are spending our money. We are the taxpayers of this city. And we are the ones that are paying for all of these projects. So please think about the senior citizens or the young citizens that are just starting out in this town. So not only do we have our city taxes, which are really going to go up this year, but we all know our school taxes are going to go up. So I'm just asking that you consider, while you're trying to spend all this money, think about the people that are going to have their taxes increased.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Hello. Brent Royer, 308 South Carver Street. I would also like to ditto the sentiment that taxes seem to be, expenses seem to be climbing rather rapidly in this community. With the number of projects that are coming out, I'm extremely distressed to see that we're proposing a $348,000 design package. We got the current fire garage built for less than that. And I was on the council at the time. I did a lot of legwork behind the scenes. Pete can vouch for that. How much work I did behind the scenes to get something that was fiscally conservative, but yet got the job done. We cannot afford a $2 million Taj Mahal or whatever the price tag is looking to be at this point. Not to mention 348,000 just to get plans. It can be done a heck of a lot less than that. Also, 11% tax levy. We've got to revisit that. There's no way people in this community can afford it with everything that's leaving this community with the schools going to be built. Even myself can't afford something like that. We keep doing like we're doing. I don't know whose agenda it is. But we've got to do something or you're going to lose a lot of people in this town real quick. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray Derring with the Lions. I just want to get with the Parks. And we're working on the pavilion. We're getting bids already or bring in to you guys. We want to start it. Have the Lions or changing. But we weren't notified about.
I apologize for that. I thought people were going to be emailing. I, we planned the meeting and I guess he posted it and.
I sent the email to Scott. So you need to check with Scott.
Well, he said he didn't, I checked with Scott because we were working on the design. Maybe he's somewhere out there. But so, but I do have an email too.
I, I don't even, before tonight, I've never seen you before, so I apologize.
I'm Ray Derring. You know my life.
I know, I know your life. I'm just saying I've never met you before.
I know. Well, I just want to be part of it. It's going to help the community of the Lions want to put this pavilion up with the bathrooms. Maybe it could cut some of our expenses. On another bathroom, we can put it onto our pavilion. That's all I want to do is help the city cut a little expenses. Like I've been hearing here, so.
We'll try to make sure that the committees get together.
She knows where. Okay, that's all I got.
Thanks, Ray.
I just want to make sure.
We appreciate the Lions.
Thank you.
I'm Tom Leakey. Three Lions self made. And I'd like to say, like Loretta said, I live on social security now. Our, I, we have to take in our, it has, on my social security, Celeste's got no job. So we have to dig into our savings to make monthly expenses. We live in a 1956 Rammer that's been added on to. So why, and I have a good job. Now you have savings. But I don't think you're thinking or representing, and you all took an oath when you to represent everybody in Winthrop. Not a select few, everybody. And there's a lot of old people in town. I consider myself old, old. But why are we not, we're supposed to be green. When we got an empty Winthrop market, nothing in there, why aren't we considering putting the ambulance barn in there? Well, even your building, the Treblehorn building in the corner there. That would not be a bad place for ambulances, to put ambulances in that corner. I mean, you had gas trucks in there. I think an ambulance would fit in there. Maybe not, but it's just a thought. And then, I mean, as far as being busy. And I, they built that barn when I was here too. I, when the co-op went down that time, I went, they built that bar, barn out and now you have all the way to the street. Why aren't we talking about adding on? The way it was designed was to be added on to, to the west. And now Treblehorn donated the rest of that ground. You have all the way to Nutrina to build it. And if you have a fire, and who's going to move the snow? You know, fires happen in winter time too in the sun. We put that out there by the lodge and you got a snowstorm come in. How are they going to get out? How's the ambulance is going to get out? I mean, somebody's going to have to, are you going to be 24/7? Because ambulance is don't, I move snow for the grocery store. And I move snow in front of the ambulance building when I saw the need. Because I went by there because I don't think the ambulance would have got out when you got to drift this high and up there. So we have to consider all these things too. Not just be nice, but why aren't we thinking green? I mean, I don't live in the new house. Why don't we repurpose some of these buildings in town? We, we already got an empty downtown. I mean, it would look a little bit better if at least we had some of this. And I, there's a lot of building there and the roof doesn't leak. Because I've been in there. There's no reason that Winthrop Market could not be repurposed for the ambulance barn and meeting rules for the fire department. I mean, why, it's a brick building. I mean, there's, it's nothing wrong with that building. That's my thoughts.
Thank you for sharing those. I would just like to say too about the 11% tax levy. That's, we, every council that I've ever been on, we always start, we set it high because we can't, we can, we can whittle it down now from there. And that's, I believe, is our intention. There's, not, not a one of us has any intention of it being staying at 11%. When you work on a budget, you start somewhere and then you have, then you start trimming.
That's not permanent.
What? That was not permanent?
No, no, that's not the, that's not the one that's being submitted. So, yeah, we're, we've had long budget meetings already. There will be more. All right. Do we have anybody else who would like to make any comments? If not, we'll move on from the open public forum to approving the agenda. Do we have any additions to the agenda? I'll start with Aaron. Anything? Pete, do you have anything to add to the agenda? Jenny? Either of you?
I want to talk about the Parks Update Plan that we met with ISG. I just want to have that on the agenda. I want to move to put that on the agenda.
We didn't compete with ISG, but we had a parks meeting.
Well, I want an update on that why it's not on here. Because we talked about that.
Should we just put that at, where's a good place for it, Michael?
Put it at 5.9 and we'll just slide it on.
All right. Anybody like to move, approve the agenda? I'd like a motion to approve the agenda. Motion, is there a second?
A second.
Motion by Jenny, second by Megan. Any discussion, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, then we have a motion to suspend the rules for actions to add the addendum items, nuisance abatements. You just need a motion.
I need a motion.
Okay. Your motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dawn. Any discussion, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right. Consent agenda. Anybody have any questions? Would like to move to approve?
Slow move.
Motion by Dawn.
Second.
Second by Jenny. Any discussion, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, new business. The Pump Works quote. Michael, do you want to give us the?
Yeah, so in August, Lightning struck our lift station, our main lift station for Public Works. Right now, we're going to get about 90% of that cost back to replace the one pump. We think it's right now a really good time to replace the other one as well. They're actually.
What's the other one?
What's the other?
The one down here.
There's two pumps down there. There's two pumps at the lift station. Yep. And so they're giving us a discount because they made a mistake when they originally put the pumps in. They were way too small. And they were probably working way too hard. So because of that, they're, they're willing to make us a deal. So for both pumps, it's $53,000 upfront. And then we'll recover about $24,000 of that from our trust insurance.
How much are you going to back, sir?
24.
So about $24,000, $25,000.
So those are pretty.
And just so the people making comments in the audience knows. So these pumps specifically pump poop from the town out to the ponds. And right now, we have one pump. So if we were to get more significant rain, that, those pumps, if they weren't working, would come back into your house. So they're pretty important.
Yeah. These are not. Try again.
Yeah, so the, before the lightning strike, we actually gave quotes on new pumps anyway. The one that we're replacing is from 2001. It's, it's what, 20, 22, 23 years old? It runs a lot. They alternate back and forth. There's holes in the water jacket, bearings are going out. We get pulled once a year and service. And we were getting close before this all happened.
And Minnesota Pump Works has been pretty transparent about the size that they were. They know that they are maybe undersized for what, what, what amount of water comes through them. So they did give us a difference in the, in the price quote.
So since we were looking at this already before the lightning strike, the lightning strike was probably kind of fortuitous that we get a little, maybe come out a little better in the end?
Yeah. It's like a buy one, get one free.
So in, about two years ago, we paid $32,000 for just one pump.
Yeah. And the original quote was 44 for each one of them. So.
And this would be covered by the enterprise fund pursuant?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's a good point that it's.
But these are our main pumps. Like they're extremely important to keep working.
I'd like to make a motion about the pumps.
Second, a motion by Megan to purchase the pumps. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jenny. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. 5.2, Resolution 2023-19, Approval of the Voter Account Agreement.
So the state appropriated funds to the voter act. And those funds are being distributed to the townships, cities and county. What the county does for us right now for our elections is basically takes care of everything. They have all of our voting equipment. They do all the printing of the ballots. They make sure, it's not like that in every county, just so you know. So this resolution basically gives them the power to take the money that would have been, would have been earmarked for our city.
Yeah, I would like to say as head, one of the head election judges last time, our, our county does really.
Yeah, they do.
Administer the elections very well. So somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to transfer the money to the county.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jenny. Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next, Police Policy, Automatic License Plate Readers. Logan, you want, want to give us a scoop? I think it's a packet. I looked at it.
So this is just the policy that I put together. It's kind of a model policy and then I tweaked it a little bit for us. But this is just to enable a feature on our cameras that are, that we recently bought for in squad cameras. And it's for automatic license plate reading. It's a pretty minimal cost over an entire year. We, it's a monthly subscription to it. But I do find that it's going to be extremely beneficial to the public. These readers will be able to read literally any license plate that drives by us and notify us of any warrants of the red shirt owner, Amber alerts, any cops alerts, so any suspect that's on the loose and that's tied through NCIC. So I think it's going to help our productivity and there's, it's a fairly newer software, but there's been a lot of really good cases that have come out of it in this cities. And we would be one of the very few in, out in the snake the woods that, that has license plate readers. So being on the two different highways, I think would be really helpful.
So Logan, it would scan license plates. It would tell you if they had a warrant, an Amber alert.
Yes.
All that stuff.
Literally any information that you can get based off of a license plate, which is a ton, will be able to instantaneously be sent to us instead of an officer having to manually type in every single plate that they see. I think it's a safety. It's a safety concern in the aspect of officers driving down the road, having to type in license plates of the suspicious vehicle, whatever it is. They don't even have to worry about that anymore. So it reduces our liability while driving. And we already have a higher liability because of all the work that we have to do while responding to a call as well, the information that we're taking in, so.
Do you know what the monthly service fee is? And is it per vehicle because it's in each squad car? Or is it just for the whole?
Yes, it is per vehicle. Michael, I don't know. I don't want to say the number of, but it's $500 per, per vehicle, so.
For the year?
For the year.
For the year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it was like $700 for all three of them.
Yeah, something like that.
I was really surprised at how reasonable it was for what, for what you get with it.
And it's already a feature in our cameras that we have.
It's literally a flip of the switch and then we get access to all of the data. And then we can also share that data with other law enforcement agencies. So if there's a suspect of a crime that we have, we can share the license plate person, whatever it is, with other agencies. If, say they're in Mankato doing whatever, we'll get notified of that vehicle being in Mankato and wherever it's from, so. And vice versa, if someone comes through our area, we can share that information with other law enforcement agencies, so.
And from my point of view, I think the safety for the officers is really big. And the ability to react to something like an Amber alert, you know? I, I know you, you know, you, you're all professionals. You'd be looking for that license plate if you had.
But you're really only as good as your eyes can see and then also typing in that license plate too, so.
Yeah.
This could be running in the background as you're typing a report on the side of the road or even while you're on traffic stop of another car, suspect vehicle drives by, Amber Alert vehicle drives by, you're immediately notified, so.
Any, anybody like to make a motion about the automatic license plate reader policy?
I would like to make a motion.
And a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Dawn. Any discussion, any other questions for Logan? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, thank you. Next, Resolution 22, Setting the City's Preliminary Tax Levy for 2024. Our preliminary tax levy will be set at $849,782. Current, that puts the current levy amount 11.09% over last year. And as I just said before, that is always where we start and then we whittle down from there. And just in case anybody thinks that we don't take budgets seriously, we spent the last, I don't know, two or three Monday nights sitting here from seven until about 10:00. So I go home Monday. Numbers are floating in my head. So we have had a lot of discussions and we will continue to. And I felt really good about it. I think all the departments were very proactive, really looked at expenses that might have been in the budget for years and years and years. And we said, hmm, do we need that? So we removed a lot of things that we didn't need in the budget and then found some things that really should be reflected in the budget to more accurately reflect what, where our city dollars are going. So I, I think the discussions have been really good.
What was the total number, like 849? What was last year? You know, percentages.
815 was last year.
Percentage is 600.
And this year's 849. So it's 35,000.
You know, if I got a dollar and you raise a dollar, so I'm at 2, I'm at 100%.
That's why I actually don't like percentages because they don't give a realistic.
That's a good point.
Example.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to go over council. I know that we worked really hard on the budget. Right now, our operating budget is actually down 6%. We cut 6%, 6% of expenses over last year. The other thing that we faced that you may remember is the revenue. The revenue was significantly down for small cities assistance. But we did start that 4M fund. We did invest and we were expecting a lot of interest off that fund. Interest rates have not gone down, they've been going up. So because we're investing that, I did adjust revenue to reflect that. So you'll see actually a 4% increase in revenue now. That's how much the 4M fund, if it pays out, is going to impact our budget. So when we go back next month and the month after when we set the actual levy, I, I think this is easily, easily able to cut. So we're sitting pretty good.
When Michael's referring to that 4M fund, it's a, an interest-bearing account that we hadn't really been taking advantage of that we probably should have. So that will earn the city interest on the funds that we have in reserve.
Yeah, it's a liquid fund too, so we can move in and out whenever we need to. It earns about, I think today it was at 5.2%.
Can I make a comment? I just noticed just for our open in here, that 849782 is actually the revenue. I think he meant to type 941, 93.
Yep, but that's where we would cut to. That's where the 849788 is coming from.
Oh, okay. All right, so you will.
Well, we'll revisit that when we go over the next budget.
Our troop and taxation meeting is set for our next council.
Uh, November.
In November.
November.
November council date.
And that's when our actual tax levy gets approved.
Yeah, so we'll be having budget discussions long before then. Somebody like to make a motion about the preliminary tax levy?
I'll make a motion.
Is that the resolution in the?
Yep.
Yes.
Then it would have the number changed?
Oh, we, yes.
Dated.
Do we need to have that?
Yeah.
And then right up above that line, change that to Winthrop.
I don't know, I just copied it from last year's. It was the one that Jenny. I'll fix that. Yeah, and the number should have been reflective of the, the total number.
Okay. So there's a motion to approve the Resolution 22. Is there a second?
Second.
You made the.
I did.
Oh, you made it, right, okay. Sorry, I'm, I got lost. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Are, opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, 5.5, Public Right of Way, Request from Tanker Bay.
Yeah, he just wants to close the street on October 8th. Yeah, he just wants to close the street on October 8th, excuse me, 8th, I think. Between Carver and First, or on Carver Street between Second and First Street.
He's got a benefit that thing.
I think he has a benefit and it's a Vikings game and.
I see it's when that guy got hurt, that motorcycle up there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, oh, yeah, 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 okay.
I move to approve.
Second. Motion by Dawn, second by Megan. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Hate, we're really cooking through this no more. A long meeting while I'm sitting here. 5.6, construction documents for fire and ambulance.
So ISG has come back with a proposal for 348,800. That package includes pre-design, design, post-design. And then documents to help bid and aid the administration in construction. And just a reminder, this, so this project is a USDA project. So in order to apply for the USDA loan, we have to have construction documents, at least prelim construction documents in order to get the funding. Our financial advisor, Shannon Sweeney, was in our office last week. We stuck, talked extensively about how to fund it and how other cities are doing it. And, you know, when, when we get USDA funding, number one, it's way cheaper than bonding. It's the same requirements as a bond. It still counts as debt against the city. But it, it puts a cap on it. So I think in general, we would be qualified to get it because we're a multi-community for ambulance. We mutual aid a lot with the fire department. And this building would fix a lot of the problems that we have with the current building, including, you know, rusting pump, pumpers and the condenser that just had to be replaced. A lot of those issues are fixed. And again, you know, six people sat at those meetings for fire and ambulance. It stole some fire department people, Jenny, Megan's on the committee. You know, we, we, we've done a lot of research. In fact, we, we brought up things like what if we took the ambulance and just tacked it onto the current fire station? The problem is, is that we literally maximize the site. So if we would ever need in addition or in the setbacks from the railroad to where the, the street is, gets really, really tight. So we've, we've designed it actually on three different properties in town. One of the properties was up by the ethanol plant. It was too close to the blast zone. We felt like it wasn't appropriate. We even thought about, you know, where the school is currently. You know, when we take that down, maybe that's our plan to start building. The problem with that is it's really close to the park. It's really close to the highway. It doesn't always combine the safest when fire trucks are trying to get out to an emergency and they're having to dodge children. And so the, the place that they, they, they selected was not just a dart on a dartboard. They, they honestly considered a lot of things. And e- even re- revet, renovating the current ambulance barn that is down there. You know, council condemned the building. What would it take to get it back up to snuff? Is it worth saving a hundred-year-old building and putting half a million dollars into it? So those, those things were not, were not taken lightly. And I think ISG has been our partner in engineering for a long time. They've done a really good job. David, who is the one that did the conceptual designs. I feel sorry for him because every committee member had different input and opinions and suggestions. And I think that we're building a building that for good or bad, is going to, going to last generations. I, you know, this is another hundred-year-old building, not a forty-year-old building that we're building. So I think there's some really great people on that committee that have worked really hard on, on getting it. So with this, after, after, if this is council's wishes and we go forward, we would start pre-design. And then after pre-design is done, we start applying for USDA funding. And it might be a year, it might be even two years. It just depends on what USDA approves.
Who pays the 348,000 now?
We do. But it is refundable through the USDA. It would get wrapped into the loan.
I think that's a terrible price for engineering. 348,000.
But that's, I think that's more than just.
For post.
Drawing the.
I know, but for a post, we. Okay, that's, I'll answer.
When I consider, you know, what has happened as far as the police moving out and now we have the police renovations and having to build a garage there. Plus, we moved the ambulance into the police thinking that would maybe solve some of the issues, but we had to remodel there and it didn't solve the issues. And now we're still not right with the ambulance. So I feel like we're just moving one fault to the next and it's costing us money everywhere we turn. And I think 348,000 for, for just plans is, is a lot of money. And honestly, if, maybe we should have done a little bit of homework before we did some of these other things about shuffling things around. Because, you know, half a million dollars here, half a million dollars there. If we build the new ambulance and fire with the renderings that we kind of looked at, we said that could be three to four million dollars. That's not a little bit of money, that's a lot of money.
You're in the committee, do you have any? Well, the ambulance, where the ambulance was, was not usable. Right, it kind of forced our hand. Downstairs here is a little jam-packed.
You said we get that money back with 348?
They wrap it in the loan. They reimburse.
Fire station now is causing problems with fire trucks and.
Yeah.
I guess I'm just saying maybe you could get some other engineers or something.
Well, I think.
Go out for bids or something.
One of the issues is that USDA loan, we can't just, I think they're fairly specific. You have to have serious design. You can't have, we want to build it about this big on this spot.
I'm just saying is, I just don't know if we can find a firm that can design the building and meet the specs more reasonably.
And I suppose we could try. I mean, we've done things like that before when we looked at our, like our audit or other things like that. And we usually found that it's, there's very few lower and there's more, there are lots that go higher. I, I don't know if it's, and there is some virtue to, ISG knows our city. They know our, they know our streets. They know the infrastructure and what's there already.
Well, we hired ISG at one time because they were a lot cheaper than somebody else. I don't remember who our past, or the previous engineer was. Oh, yes, I do. It was guys from Jalen at that time. Tom Homme and that, that firm.
So they were more expensive than the one we have now?
Yes. And we went out for bid and they were cheaper.
Troy, can you speak at all to the problem, any of the problems with the fire barn? I mean it. Oh, yeah, sorry. I didn't realize we had the fire chief here.
We just recently had our air compressor that pumps the air brakes up on our trucks. A hole in it, does it rust it up because of moisture in the building. We come back from a fire, everything's wet, gear is wet, hoses are wet. We have currently four fans blowing on our gear to dry them out. Hose racks put it all, all the moisture hangs in there. It's not good for the, the truck compressors because that sucks it in the, in the truck. And it's not good for the hoses to land the hose or on the trucks wet.
So when that one was designed, it wasn't designed properly?
There was no air exchange in it. And that's probably the largest problem in that building.
Can we retrofit air exchange in there? And what would that cost?
I'm sure you could, yep.
I'd like to look into the cost of that too, when we're considering if we need to add on an additional, if we're just looking for fire and ambulance or just ambulance. I think we should consider that. Because I don't want the fire department to have.
I recall that building too, that there was to be a hose tower in there and there was a big argument, we didn't need it. So now we're talking about where hoses, I'm just recalling things that were, you know, it makes us old, old duffer sound like we just didn't do our work. We did.
Oh, I, I think so.
We did. And so they didn't want these.
And there are things.
I don't know, I'd go by chask on them and they still build towers and stuff like that or hoses. I don't know, I'm not a fireman, so.
And things change over 20 years. The, the size of the building that worked really well 20 years ago is, is too small now because the, the trucks are that much bigger. And, you know, that's something that I think the committee looked at too. One of the other things was the, for the ambulance, there's a very real possibility that at some point we're going to need to have onsite staff. And they're going to need a place to shower and they're going to need a place to sleep sometimes. And we don't have that now. And because we are, we're the ambulance for a larger area than just the city of Winthrop, that's something we have to be aware of too. So what are the council's wishes?
Is there a different question?
Is there another company like ISJ wanting contact or?
I don't know of them, but I mean, they're, I'm sure they're, because I'll think.
Can I make a motion that we find out how much it's going to cost to retrofit the fire barn with an air exchanger to take care of their problem? And then also, at the same time, be looking at other firms for engineering, just so we can make sure that we're doing our due diligence with bids.
Not that one?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the motion is to explore air exchange in the fire barn? And to get bids for the construction documents?
Correct.
Okay.
Cut. A proposal.
Proposal, okay. Alright. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Megan, second by Pete. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed or yes? Oh, you have two to two. Yes?
I know.
Where's Rob when I need him?
Do you have the power to break the code?
Do I?
This council president and the absence of the mayor, yes, you do.
Thanks.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't want to sway council one way or the other. You know, there's, there is some virtue with. It's not like these documents will be produced tomorrow anyway. So I mean, if we want to get some other feelers for other firms, I, I don't, I mean, I don't think that's the end of the world. I don't think it's going to delay.
That was kind of my thought. I, I, I don't want to undo the good that committee did because I think there's a real need for that building. But I do think it is probably smart to get, see if we can get some other bids and look at some of those things. So I vote in favor of the motion. So, motion carried.
Can I just ask for council, just for clarification for the staff, are we looking for more than one bid from one firm? Are we looking for two, three?
Get all you can.
Yeah, whatever you can get.
Okay.
Alright. Moving on, construction bid review for the police garage.
The police garage went out for bid a month ago, more than a month ago. The only bid that, I'm sorry, the only complete bid that came back was Master Builders. We did have another build from a national company that on the day that it was due at like 3:00 PM, I think it was pretty late in the day, asked, I don't know, 20 questions. And I told them they were too late because I wasn't going to fill out. It was very specific questions, like, that were already part of the, the garage bid, so. Attached are the full specs and the cost analysis of the building. They're broken down. I believe Paul is here. Okay.
Yep.
So if you have any questions, you can definitely answer them. Included is the resolution for the approval of the building plans. If that's council wishes to proceed with construction for the police department garage.
Can I just take for an accounting, can you give the public and the council just how much we've spent on the building and the construction cost so far? Just so we know what we put into the project.
I would, I would have to look that up. I don't have this cell open.
One second.
Do you have a question? Heather usually has the answer. And I would just like to make people aware that we did put this out for bid and, you know, actively looked for as, as many bids as we could get.
I think for most of the construction companies, this was way too small of a project and it wasn't worth their time.
I'm glad I'm not building anything. I don't think I can afford a tent.
And I think in fairness to.
Maybe the four, three people, that's why they're in pens. Okay.
It, it is a garage, but there are some, you know, this is not just a, a two-car garage sitting on, you know, on a farm site or something. It has to have a little bit more than that because of the police garage and, and they're going to use one of the bays for storing.
Yeah, there's evidence, which we have right now.
Are Heather's numbers?
Right around 118.
For renovations or is that the building?
The building.
The building renovations, getting an equipped camera system inside the building.
I think we purchased the building for 160, so I don't think that can be right.
That was last year.
Oh, so those are just costs for this year? And then last year we spent the 160 to purchase the site, is that right?
157.
Yeah, it's on the air system.
Right, 57.
So 118 is just the cost for this year that we've spent. Is that correct? I also think it, it does say something that the bid came from a local business. You know, we, we do try really hard to keep business in town when we can. So I think it does say something, a local business will bid on it. Are we still waiting for?
Canyon's going to take a while.
Okay.
Do we want to wait? It was what, the price of the building? It was like 157, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was.
It was like 157, yeah.
You're going to have as much in the garage as you've got in the van.
Which is 275. If you're doing that.
So does anybody want to make a motion regarding the police garage?
To.
To approve that, to go ahead with it?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to go ahead with the police garage.
I second.
Okay, there's a motion by Jenny, a second by Dawn. Discussion.
Is there any way we can temporarily use one of the four bay bays? So three of the bays are going to be, have police cars with the K-9 unit now. The fourth bay, I know they wanted for evidence. But I don't know if it's possible that we use one of those bays for the ambulance so that we have more time with the ambulance fire deliberations? Because that was the problem, is that we, I thought we didn't have enough room for the ambulances.
I think we discussed this at the last meeting. We're going to use the garage right behind the ambulance.
So right now we can house both ambulances, right? Correct?
We just have to move one of the public work trucks. It's the one that they use for, I don't know, dumping, the dumpster truck.
Alright, other discussion. On moving forward with the police garage. Any discussion? Any discussion? Well, call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. I would, I would have to say in this instance, I, I put a lot of weight into the committee and I think our police department is doing an outstanding job. I think this is in the best interest of taking care of the equipment we have and maintaining the excellent police service that we have. So I vote to move ahead with the construction bid review. Motion carried. 5.8, nuisance abatement proceedings. This is our extra packet. Yes.
Yeah, this is the extra packet. And I apologize, there were so many pictures that I would not send them through mail. I, I don't know what to tell you.
Do we want, are you covering this? Is Logan giving? Do we want, are you covering this, is Logan giving us an update, what, how is it best to do this?
Logan, do you want to do abatements? Jason, thank you. I know the pictures in your packets are really small, but it was like 50 some pages, so. I shrunk it so that we're not killing you for use. This is the abatement on 204 South Carver Street in Winthrop, PID 370. 457000. Again, this is going through the same procedures as we did the previous month. This is to abate the nuisance at 204.
And these are current photos?
And these are current photos from today.
From this morning.
And they've had notices?
Multiple notices over multiple years.
But the specific ones, yeah, the notices, you know, like early September, the four properties on the agenda today. Three of them were personally served towards the beginning of the month there. Proposed resolution for each one, it says the dates in which they were served, one of them, I think this one was done by mail, which is allowed by the ordinance. And none of the items appear to be removed.
No, they have not.
Are there? The resolutions?
Yeah, the resolutions are in there.
So probably just go one at a time.
Sure.
Okay.
So this is resolution 20. 23-024.
All right. So, going with resolution. 24, yes?
Yep, 24.
All right, anyone like to make a motion?
I move.
Second. By Dawn, second by Jenny, any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. There's another one.
I have no idea.
It's eight.
It's in the backyard. Well, there's like a hole with bad land in there.
What, a hole?
Yeah, what is it?
I don't know.
Compost?
Garbage?
Probably junk.
This is resolution 2023-25, this is at 801 North Main Street. It was also served a notice earlier this month. They have leaves, paper stones, in general. Old vehicles in the background that haven't run for a number of years.
Both of these vehicles here are registered in 2018 and 2019. The vehicle on the right. Has an improper plate on the back that's not registered to any vehicle. Once again, this has been ongoing issue ever since I've been here and then years even before that with this property. And nothing ever gets done. But we have done state citations in the past. The individual pays the citation after going to court and, you know. Then it never gets fixed, so.
That's why we're going this way.
Yeah.
So this one, they were served personally September 6th and does not appear to be any improvements?
None. This individual did at about, what time?
4:00.
4:00 PM today, sent an email to Michael and I. Asking for an extension. Is the first contact this individual has ever made with the police department regarding any of these issues for the years that we've dealt with them. And there was. Some language in there about how she's going through a hard time and hasn't had time to deal with it. Because of personal issues and. Frankly, it seems convenient that now that we're going through the abatement process that at 4:00 PM on the day that. We're doing the abatement, that she decides to send an email regarding this.
So the council, if you want to. Create an extension, maybe just go ahead with the.
We did last month, but that was in case where there was.
Progress.
There was some progress.
Progress and communication.
Yeah.
And, like I said, it. You know, it's, this individual could have reached out a long time beforehand, but frankly, at 4:00 PM. The day that we're going over this, I, I don't think it's appropriate. Especially given the. Especially given the history here, too, where there's just.
Sorry, it was 5:24.
Oh, you could go ahead after business hours.
Yep.
So if you hadn't checked your email, which you are entitled not to, let's. All right, regarding resolution 25. Council, what are your wishes?
I vote to do the abatement.
I second. By Dawn, second by Jenny, any further discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, all those in favor say aye, all right. Opposed? Motion carried. Next up.
Maro, six places.
Yes.
05.
That's one row, no, right?
Yes. So this is the same, I'm trying to look for my. So, yep, this is 605 North Carver, not Carver, Carver. Street, they were also served on its resolution 2023-26. This has similar problems, old machinery that's been out with weed abatements. Weeds next to the grounds, you can see tons of tires. That's really our concern, mosquitoes, rats, that, that type of thing where creatures can roam.
Shouldn't have been weeds, you've got three lot more.
They also have.
And even the gas.
A plethora of snowmobiles. That are just kind of strewn above the property.
Two of them are registered in, I think, 18 and 19 or somewhere in there. Actually, I take that back, one is in, registered in 2019, oh yeah, 2022. That one is registered in 2023. There's one other one that is registered in 2023, and then there's a fourth one. That is under a tree, as you can see right there, that unknown if it's registered, but I'm guessing not.
Can we review the ordinance if it's registered and in the lawn, like if it was just the snowmobiles were all registered for current year?
Yeah, we've already had this discussion with the homeowner here that. These two right here. But it's fine for them to be on the property, but they need to be tarped or covered. And then the weeds need to be kept up around them. There's car parts underneath this, these three trees here and that one. This is once again a habitual offender of our city ordinances. Frankly, they don't ever deal, they don't even pay the citations until it goes all the way through the court systems. And they, they literally just never touch it, so. And there's nearly no discussion, only a discussion ever is if their daughter reaches out to Erin and everyone's.
Well, I think it's good to keep in mind, the point of doing all this is that. We want our town to look good, we, it's also not fair to all the residents who do keep their yards neat and early and follow the rules, but.
I know in the past, this individual has said that, well, they don't have a garage to store this stuff. And that's their excuse. You don't need a garage to trim weeds, you don't need a garage to get rid of car parts, you don't need a garage to. Take care of most of this stuff, it comes down to a little bit of effort and getting rid of it, and there hasn't been.
All right, so resolution 2023-26, council, what are your wishes? Make a motion. Motion by Jenny.
I'll second.
Second by Dawn. Any discussion? Any discussion, any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The next one is 2023-027. This is at the property of 203 North Henepin Street in Winthrop. The individual has not made any contact with us. Order was served via the mail, just like the other ones.
Actually, this one was in person.
Is there anybody living in that one?
Sorry, they did contact us afterwards, didn't they?
Not to me.
It's all before you. Oh.
I know them. I believe Brian served on this one while she was outside. Weeding.
Is this the property that has the well?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So we do have programs for well coverage, if they're wanting to get rid of the well, through the Minnesota Real Waters Association, they actually reimburse us, so.
She still owns the house, don't you think?
Yes.
That is, I think we got it. That resolution was, I think I had sent, I had updated, so that's a previous draft, but it should not be.
Kathy Hobel?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I just had.
Yeah, Kathy Hobel's not the owner of this property?
Yeah.
The resolution says.
Right, that's, that's an older draft.
Yeah.
It's not brown. I had just sent two drafts of the resolution, sorry. Original draft got in there. Oh, she moved, I mean, she moved across the street before I went.
They're all that property.
Well, I mean, she just left it, I mean.
All right. So, resolution 2023-027. Again, council, what are your wishes?
Always a lot of traffic on that, that street, it looks pretty. There's a lot of traffic on that street, I walked there all the time and it's like, let's clean it up. Looks terrible.
The well is kind of scary, too.
I know Mike mentioned something about.
I know that I sent her, the owner of the property information about Minnesota Real Water, yeah. I can send it again, though.
And we can see if they're ordinance, um, we'll see if they have an ordinance about.
We do have an ordinance, yeah.
But for now, it's just a nuisance, I mean.
Yeah.
All right, so, did you make a motion?
I did.
You did, all right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dawn. Any discussion? Any discussion, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I wouldn't want them as my neighbors, but.
Absolutely not. Sorry.
Who would want that? Garbage.
Well, it's just fair. Everybody else is, yeah, everybody else is to care of their yard, wants mosquitoes and. All right.
5.9?
5.9. Dawn, you wanted an update?
Well, I just wanted an update because we told the ladies last month that they could come this month and we'd give them an update on where we were at with all that, now they, they're here. And now we don't have an update, it wasn't even put on the agenda.
I thought they were informed of the combined meeting, so I was a hundred of that, they weren't. That's the whole point, we had set up a meeting, I said we'd have to get a combined, because at the same time, we were looking at the park pavilion with Scott.
Yeah, and then we talked about doing all the three.
Yeah, and we just said, let's, well, I said, let's do a combined meeting, so we can talk about some of this before our next meeting now. And the only people at the meeting were Rob and myself. And we did talk about the splash pad and, and I know you weren't notified, I guess, so.
Right, and I don't think that line split was either.
Scott got a email, I guess, so. I don't know who got. Beginning of September. Shortly after, shortly after our last city council meeting, we had a combined meeting.
Who was all at the meeting?
Just Rob and I. And I thought, I thought you guys were invited, honestly, so.
I'm going to get a little more coming up sooner.
Well, we did talk about wanting it on the agenda for the poll council next month. Okay, and I don't know if there needs, if there's things by on park level before then.
We have discussed some things, there's a proposal about possibly ISJ, we talked about if we wanted to update the master plan. And then also figuring out how we want to fund park projects because they're so expensive and if we're not saving enough in the capital expenditures to make any.
Right, we did.
Progress towards that 20 budget plan, we do need to figure out how we're going to. Either budget for it, or bond for it, or whatever, you know what I mean, or take out of reserves. We got to figure out that before we can really make any commitments to them on how much we're going to spend and what we're going to provide as a city. So I don't know if that's something more when we talk, continue to talk about the budgets, or.
Do we need to have a budget work session, again? To talk about some of that?
We want to talk about, I don't know.
Or do we wait until next month's meeting?
Sort of like to council.
We needed to talk to the public about if that weren't here in our last budget meetings about the million dollars, possibly taking that out of reserve and how we want to. You know, I don't know, have we decided that?
When we have a meeting, it's, and any of our meetings are open to public, so.
But I don't think that has been published in the posting we're in publish here.
They're always posted, I mean, if.
No, as far as what we talked about, you know, so, just to be transparent. To be transparent, at our last budget meeting, we talked about the possibility of taking a million dollars out of reserves or whatever.
Or designated.
Some amount. And designating it to certain park projects, and if that's something we wanted to do. And I guess I'd like to hear feedback from the public on if we want to take a million dollars out of reserve to spend on projects like a splash pad and new playground equipment. The million dollars was initially going to be used maybe to put towards bond funding or just to, you want to explain that part of it?
Sure, yeah, so our financial advisor. Said that we could take the million dollars that we were going to put towards Second Street, put it towards the park for immediate needs, the problem with funding parks is that you can't. Technically bond for parks, because there's no revenue at the end of the day. The reason that we can bond for like Second Street is because, you know, it's in the best interest of the general public to have sewer and water and streets and sidewalks, right? That makes sense? The Minnesota State statute is really unclear about the need for parks, it makes it really difficult for councils to go out and bond, so there. There are two ways that you can bond for parks, but it's very convoluted and it's not. It's action prohibitive, let's just put it that way. And so, Sweeney said, you know, instead of taking out the million dollars to buy down the bond for Second Street, you could use that money towards park improvements. And using that money would obviously. Make us take out a little bit longer bond, but at least the revenue accounts, our enterprise accounts can handle it. The current pressure on, on those accounts. We have a couple bonds that are coming off in 2025.
Bye.
And two more come off in 2020, 2030, sorry, that's really hard for me to always do, so five years later, they fall off. So, the revenue funds, you know, without even raising rates, we would have the ability to help pay that million dollars down.
And I think the, the one million dollar figure was, I think that was Shannon's saying, you could do up to this amount without it. Adversely affecting our credit rating, it wouldn't have any impact on our ability to, it would, we'd still have plenty of reserve. He made it sound like it was, you know, this was, would be a. Yeah, a doable, reasonable option, and it was, you know, so it's not like one million dollars was our, ooh, we have to do it, that we could do. Up to that amount, so.
So what would it do to the assessments, to the Second Street project, nothing?
Nothing.
No.
You're just going to bond another million dollars? If nothing happens?
No, the assessments, Pete, just a reminder, they're only on what? Only on the street, that's all we assess.
But I mean, how do you pay that million dollars back on that?
The million dollars was for sewer and water, it would come out of sewer and water funds.
For the park? I'm talking about what?
Yes. So the sewer and water would pay the extra million dollars for the bond for Second Street.
You mean the, the monthly rates or?
Essentially, yes, yep. He believes that.
But not the construction?
Yes, well.
Well, it's still costing somebody a million dollars.
Right. He believes without making very, very few rate adjustments, you could handle the extra million dollars in our bond, if that makes sense.
My only reservation with this is that we have all these other bigger projects now for building the two hundred thousand dollar garage at the police department. And then if we possibly have a three to four million dollar combined ambulance fire department, there's just getting to be a lot of high dollar projects and I just don't want our spending to get out of control because unfortunately, our population's only thirteen hundred, we're not thirteen thousand, so. I mean, we don't have a tax basis to spread this as much over, so I just want to make sure that we don't get our hands into too many projects where all of a sudden it does cause an adverse effect.
What about our franchise fees? Do we have, I, I'm talking about like fees.
Like cable?
Like cable and stuff.
Those go to the cable commission.
I mean, should we raise those and pay some profit for the city?
We can't under our current agreement, they have to go to the countywide cable commission.
Yeah. They do, I mean, the cable commission pays for some stuff here, that's.
Well, I just know other cities. Jack those up a lot.
Yeah, but all that does is jack the rates up for.
Well, but I mean, you know, looking for avenues of creating these items, you know.
Can I ask you a question? Getting back to Dawn's original request, what was the discussion at the park committee meeting? I don't think I got that, no, we're talking about.
So the discussion was that we talked about, pretty much we pulled up the budget with the capital expenditures and what we were saving and we realized that there was no way with what we were saving that we could really fund any of the projects coming up with the twenty year park plan. I mean, when you're only saving like ten thousand dollars a year for parks.
So there is, there is a park plan right now?
There's a twenty year park plan that we spent five thousand dollars, I think, with ISJ two, two three, so. Yeah, we decided that we wanted to do that once the pavilion from the Lions was, we wanted to make sure that we had a kind of a cohesive plan so we knew if we were going to put the pavilion somewhere that the park kind of.
So there, there is a plan, but it needs to be updated.
The plan is current, it's like brand new.
Yeah, it's current.
Now you have people wanting to put in a splash pad.
Correct, and that's not in the current plan.
But they want to raise the funds to pay for it.
Yep.
But they want to know if the city also wants to contribute.
So I was instructed by council to get quotes on updating the plan at the last budget meeting and seeing what it would cost to survey, which the survey is going to have to be done either way. Whether the Lions build a pavilion or, but they're going to have to survey the land. So I did get quotes for that and I was instructed not to put it on the agenda tonight, so.
That one's high too?
Thirty some thousand.
Thirty thousand.
Yeah, I think the update to the master plan was, was that fourteen or nineteen? I can't remember what was the reverse, but the whole plan costs us five thousand dollars. But to update it costs thirteen thousand.
I think we can use that plan too either. We can.
Or not just destroy the plan.
Right, we can, we can adapt the plan.
I know, but it's for thirteen thousand, that was just to update the plan. If we change it, that's a lot of money.
But I don't know that we would have to redo the whole plan if we, so we, we might look at the plan and say, all right, we're going to, you know, we want to move this parking lot over here and we're instead going to put the pavilion here. I, I don't know that we have to have the whole park plan redone if we change a portion of it.
Yeah, I agree.
So I, I don't know that we would need to do that. But the surveying and those sorts of things, I suppose we do because we don't want to put something where it's too low or. Which is one of the things that I know is a frustration to lots of people when we're talking about city building projects because I could, I can probably put up a garage in my yard quicker and cheaper than the city can put something in the park or can build it. Like, like I said, with the police department garage, it's, it's not the same as the garage next to your house. It, it has to meet a different standard. And, and part of that is to protect the taxpayer because we don't want to put something in the park or on our city property that isn't going to meet the need or is going to fall down after five years. So that's part of the reason that we do spend extra money or it seems like extra money on plans and extra things like that. So I, this is a, we can't, we can't act on it, we just would like it put on the agenda for October. October's meeting.
Yes, we definitely can.
Okay. So we're moving on then to committee updates. Michael, do you have anything for us?
If you haven't noticed, the mural has started, the latest, three sixty building, the mural should be done hopefully, I don't know, the rain kind of delayed us, so she was painting underneath a tarp today.
All summer with no rain.
That's great, so that E D A. project, that actually started actually before I even got here through a Smith grant, so the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation is helping us with that. I just wanted to let you guys know that we are going to get some help from Smith. So we are one of the cities selected through the rev program. Myself and some of the rev'ers are going to go down to Albert Lee tomorrow to accept our nomination and bid to get some economic development help. Been working a lot with the fire and ambulance, obviously they have a lot coming up. I put the open house flyer on your desk, so please take that home. October seventh, from eleven to I think one thirty. They're going to do burgers, brats, nineteen nineteen root beer, and we said A and W, that's almost the same. And obviously they'll do fire truck rides and they're going to do some demonstrations, so please come to that. We also have.
Challenge the community to really show up for this. I, I'm always a little bit taken aback, our surrounding communities, the fire department will have their, you know, chicken dinner or whatever, and they get like a thousand, fifteen hundred people. And we have, I'm, I'm not saying that our community doesn't support the fire department, but we could show up in bigger numbers for this, so there's your challenge.
Give those three girls to get this challenge on. I was saying, done.
Check, check.
I think the day before is the police.
Police one.
Yeah, the K nine, Jenny's is doing a fundraiser for the K nine unit and the puppy is going to be there, our actual puppy is going to be at the fundraiser. So Logan's going to go up and get it, so you'll be able to meet Mr. K nine.
So that's Friday from four to seven.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. All right, anything else for us, Michael?
Not at this time.
And let me just say that rev. thing is really, that's, that's a big deal and will be very good for economic development and the cohesiveness working with Given and Fairfax is, I think, outstanding. So thank you for making that happen. Fire, is there anything else? Thank you. Ambulance, no. Electric gold.
Got my M F P. bulletin the other day and I noticed, I can't remember his last name, but Greg, he used to be at the stores, now I Jack, he's now the president. So he and I are going to have a good time. After what I learned the other day, I, I, I was truly disappointed.
Yeah, and I, he called me last week, Mike DeWitt did, and I called him back, left him a message, sent him an email, I've gotten nothing back from M M U A. So it's kind of a ruse at this point and it's, it's very expensive for the public to have that service. We did have some service interruptions on Sunday, so Troy was helping with that and H M H. came up and helped us out, get it fixed.
I got a call from Gordy the other night and telling me they called him. And he says, this is happening all the time, so somehow we got to get somebody.
Who's calling him?
The county.
The after hours number goes to Troy.
Might have been a resident.
They might just have his number.
He told me the county.
I don't know why the county would be calling him, they have nothing to do with our.
Well, I don't know, I, I just assumed somebody called the county to say that there was an outage or something.
I'll take care of it tomorrow.
Yeah, it might be dispatch, it could be.
Jenny will handle it. All right, that's one of your points. I like it. Parks, we've kind of covered, yes? Library, I was, I wasn't able to be at the meeting this week's, or last, last week.
They just went over the policy for hotspots, they want to try to activate some additional ones, there's been a waiting list for it.
They have been popular.
Yeah, pretty popular. They are also looking at spending the rest of their budget this year contractually. The county government gives us money from the state that we have to spend and they're a little bit down. Other than that, they're gearing up for like the Christmas season, there's a lot to do with Christmas in the country.
Public works, I think, cable commission.
We meet Wednesday.
All right, ours fiber, we are not meeting this month.
Dad, do you have anything?
No. I'm watching right at the right time.
Speak now or forever hold your peace. All right, there being nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn? Second, all's in favor, say aye. All right, you're adjourned, so thank you very much.
Is that your motion?
Yes.